On St. Paul Planning Commission meeting, it has been determined that it's not practical nor prudent for the commission and its committees to meet in person or pursuant to Minnesota statute. As a result, it's not feasible for any member of the Planning Commission to be present at its regular location, and all members of the Planning Commission will attend this meeting by telephone or other electronic means. We will begin today's meeting by doing a roll call. Sonya?
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Grill?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Cantner?
Here.
Commissioner McMurtry? Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Presley?
Here.
Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Rithburg? Commissioner Said?
Here.
Commissioner Tagheer? Commissioner Tagheer, I see you, but you're not responding. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Underwood?
Here.
Commissioner Yang? And of course Chair Ringo Morales?
Here. So we'll begin today's meeting with, I have two announcements this morning. The first is, as everybody learned, two weeks ago Commissioner Baker stepped down from the commission after moving out of St. Paul. That left the first vice chair title open. What has been traditional practice in the commission is to move up individuals who had other titles within the commission. So that would be that we would be moving Commissioner Grill up to first vice chair and Commissioner Underwood up to second vice chair. That has been the standard practice of the commission, at least as long as I've been a member, but I wanted to let everybody know and give an opportunity for anybody to voice any comments or if they had any interest in being vice first vice chair, to voice them now. Otherwise, if it's okay with everybody, that's what we'll go ahead and do. And I think that also includes Commissioner Grill or Commissioner Underwood if they would have any objection to assuming those new roles. All right, seeing none, then, oh, Commissioner Grill?
I just wanted to say, this is Commissioner Grill, I have no objection to moving up to second vice chair.
It would be first vice chair.
Sorry, yes, moving up from second vice chair to first vice chair, thank you for saying.
Okay. Okay, so then we will go ahead and do that. Sonya and Louise, I'm hoping that we can, going forward, the Planning Commission agenda and documents can reflect that, if that's okay?
Chair, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then, and then the additional item then is that then now there is an open secretary role. This individual is responsible for signing the minutes as they become, as, as, cares them. So if there's any interest by anybody to take on that role, please, if you could just email me after, after today's meeting and just let me know, and then I will talk it over with Louise, depending on how much interest there is. Does anybody have any questions about those items? All right. And then the second item that I wanted to talk about is I wanted to let the commission know that yesterday afternoon, Louise, the Director Perdida and I, had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and Council President Brad Mullen, where we discussed the commission's resolution on the request to start inclusionary zoning study. We had a meeting for about an hour, I think the mayor was there for about half an hour, he was running in between meetings, but I found it really productive. I hope that I was able to voice the concerns by the commission. I know that a lot of the members who had, just to recap, that that resolution came as a result of the agenda item for the Atlas Lexington Station site plan. And I know a lot of the individuals who voted against approval of that site plan are no longer part of the commission, so I tried to voice sort of the concerns that I was hearing from those commissioners, both during the commission and in private, just during the commission, and then also during Steering Committee, while we were drafting that resolution, we spent about three months trying to draft that, and so we had a lot of discussions at Steering, and I tried to voice the concerns and comments that were made by Steering Committee members. So I found it really productive, I hope. Council President Brad Mullen and the mayor found it productive as well. And I'll leave it, leave it up to Louise to explain where we are in the inclusionary zoning study, we're in the process, when we can expect it. I think more than anything, what I had asked Council President Brad Mullen is, I think what the commission needs is just clarity on if and when that that study would be coming, where in the vision, or in the city's, the mayor's vision and the city council's vision, do they see such a project being completed? And I think Louise can shed some light on that. So that, that's it for my announcements. Louise?
Chair, I don't have any announcements, though, if you'd like me to, I could, I was gonna try to put some pen to paper and sort of map out where we're going on that study. So I'm not totally prepared to give you an update, but I can do my best if you, if you want to give, want me to give a mini update today.
Sure.
As it relates to.
If you feel comfortable, otherwise, we, otherwise we can wait until you have had a chance to, you know, like you said, put pen to paper and really map it out. I'm okay with either. Like I said, I was really, I found yesterday's meeting really productive, and so it's up to you.
Yeah, I think I might do that. I might come back with, with more of a report on where we're at with things. Probably by the next meeting, we'll have a little more concrete timelines. Just know that the, there's an RFP draft out, or it's, it's pretty close to done, but we're incorporating some final edits, sort of on the economic development side of things, as well as there's some parallel interests between the city and Reconnect Rondo. And they were, as you heard recently, they were recently funded for some work around anti-displacement, so we're trying to ensure that we're, we understand kind of what's in both scopes and not be redundant. So that's the mini update I will offer. More timeline to come.
Thank you, Louise. Any questions for the Director or myself? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, is the zoning committee. I'll turn over, I believe Commissioner DeJoy was very kind to lead this past meeting. Commissioner DeJoy?
Okay, thank you, um, thank you Chair. So at the zoning committee meeting, we approved minutes from 695 Grand Project, the 402 Front Street Project, and the 1945 Rome Lot Split, but that particular project was, had been laid over from the July 15th meeting for further clarification. So, let's see, I don't know if I have those in front of me, but it was concerning Scott and Taylor Ames and Kurt and Rebecca Pennings. They applied for an appeal of a lot split approval by the planning administrator under the provisions of the Legislative Code. Let's see, there was some deliberation about that, and, let's see, this is the resolution that was passed. Development on the new lots must comply with the zoning code 63.111. Residential development on steep slopes requirement and standards. New houses shall be set back at least seven feet from the neighboring lots six and nine, designed with at least two stories, to minimize the building footprints and designed to fit into the site without significant regrading, to protect the stability of the slopes and preserve existing trees while preserving excessively tall retaining walls and unattractive trough, trough space yards between buildings and retaining walls. And then the second condition was, all grading and new construction on the lots must be designed to minimize grading within a five feet of neighboring lots six and nine, to protect the neighboring property from surface water and drainage. So the actual resolution was to, to deny, it was to deny the, the appeal on 1945 Rome. And I'm, I'm wondering if staff wants to elaborate a little bit on that, on the rationale?
Chair and Commissioner Joy, so we, this has sort of been a collaborative case. So both, actually Katie Dadless and Marilyn Rosendahl have been involved, as well as Alan Torsonson. Marilyn, her, her voice has temporarily gone away, so I might see if Katie could step up for a second and if she'd like to offer any, any sort of comments on the case.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Louise and thanks Commissioner DeJoy. So the application was an appeal of a lot split decision to approve a lot split by the planning administrator, and in the process of doing that, let's see, there, the, the staff reviewed the, the grounds for the appeal and found that they, they didn't meet any criteria for granting the appeal. I think what staff found was that the preliminary approval letter that had approved the final lot split said that it would be subject to some minimum setbacks, minimum grading near the lot lines and protection of neighboring property from surface drainage. And the applicant argued that the way that the lot split was approved was inadequate and asked that the final approval be modified to strengthen the approval. So that was something that was then being done as part of the appeal application and reflected in staff's revised recommendation and requiring the conditions that Commissioner DeJoy had just mentioned. And the zoning committee concurred with that and made a recommendation, excuse me, that the appeal be denied, but that, so that the approval of a lot split would stand, but that we would also require a couple of conditions be added to that in order to be able to strengthen the standards for that approval in order to address the concerns that were raised by the appellant's. So if you have any other questions, let me know.
So that's where we're at right now. The zoning committee is recommending that the 1945 Rome Avenue is hereby denied and was subject to the following conditions as previously stated. I think we have to take action on that.
Yes, so the motion coming out of committee is to, it was denial of the appeal with conditions of the new approval. Is, would that be a correct way of phrasing Ms. Dadless?
Chair Ringo Morales, yes.
Okay, so is there any discussion in the motion coming from committee? Seeing none, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Tagheer?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So, so that item is, is approved, the denial of the appeal for challenging the zoning administrators' split approval with, with additional. Think someone's doing algebra in the background. Go ahead, Commissioner DeJoy.
Okay, so what, what I don't have is, are, if there's any site plan reviews, I don't have that information, maybe Commissioner Riley can share that. And the other information I have is that the next zoning committee meeting scheduled for August 12th is canceled.
Thank you, Louise, would you happen to know the upcoming site plans?
Chair, I can grab that, I, I believe one of them was canceled coming up here.
That's, that's correct, this is Commissioner Riley, there, there is no, there are no items on the next site plan review meeting.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Riley.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee. I know we're, we're doing a relay here and the battalion's gonna be handed off to Commissioner Holt and Commissioner Presley soon, but I believe Commissioner Grill still led this past meeting, so I'll turn to her.
Yep, so this is Commissioner Grill. I have a couple of items. The first item is that we have been on a quest for a vice chair for CNPC for some, some time, and at the last meeting, we actually had two excellent candidates for vice chair, and so we currently have two co-vice chairs, Commissioner Presley, Commissioner Holt. So congratulations to them and thank you for stepping up. And I think we'll take a month or two where I sort of phase out, and then they will take over running the committee. So that is an update, an update for them is that I will not be at the next meeting because we have a conflict with the Riverview Task Force, so they will get to jump in very quickly. And on the agenda for that meeting on August 10th is the homeless services zoning study and the forward open space lot requirements. That is a note that those are coming up. And then today we have Mike Richardson here. In the Comprehensive Neighborhood Committee, at our last meeting, we reviewed an industrial zoning study and wanted to discuss the scope based on some developments that came before the, the commission in early 2021. It came to staff's attention that there might be, might be time for some revision and study. So with that, here is Mike Richardson to tell you more.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill, Chair Ringo Morales. Any questions, my name is Mike Richardson, for those of you.
Oh, yeah, I would.
Me.
If everybody else could make sure to mute your microphones so that Mr. Richardson can give his presentation.
Thank you Chair, I'm very easily distracted. So I'm, I'm a city planner, I'll give you a brief introduction to the industrial zoning item. I don't have any slides for you today, so you'll just have to trust me to paint a picture of industrial zoning with my words. I'd like to note too, that Director Perdida, Michael Wade, and Marilyn Rosendall contributed significantly to this work so far and anticipate will continue to do so. But I did note too, we had a really good discussion, excuse me, at Papa Neighborhood Committee, a couple of weeks ago now, there was a good discussion, good suggestions for things to address as we move forward. So Commissioner Grill had asked me to talk just a little bit about the intended purpose, why it's necessary right now to do this, what the intended scope is, and what would be expected of the commission. So the, the, overall, the intent of this is to align the zoning code with the 2040 policy and the code intent that we have for industrial, industrialized zone land, and that's written within the text of the code itself. The, the plan and that, and that code identified goals like providing access to good paying jobs and preserving and growing the tax base. So it's necessary, excuse me. All right. Full steam ahead, this is necessary now because of the recent adoption of the plan, and there are a couple of policies in there that, that call for the protection of currently, what is currently industrial land from conversion to residential or institutional uses, and also evaluating the impact of tax generating industrial land and things of compatibility with adjacent land uses, making sure there's infrastructure in place to, to accommodate the various uses that are allowed on industrial land. And then I would mention to you, the second thing that, that's driving this, there's, there's been continued discussion at HRA about the appropriateness of certain uses such as institutional uses, charter schools specifically, and some of the uses like residential on industrialized zone land and whether that is appropriate. This is a discussion that's going on, been going on for a very long time, and this is, this is an opportunity to, to make some changes to the zoning code, potentially help address some of those, some of those concerns. Getting into the intended scope, I'm not gonna get too deep into this, there's, there's quite a bit of detail, in fact, it's, it's a more of a work plan than a scope in, in what you've got. But we see there being three major phases. First is sort of an inventory analysis phase, second is developing some solutions, some potential solutions that we could implement via the zoning code and vetting those, and then finally is, is the adoption process through Planning Commission and City Council. And as you will note in the, in the scope, it's been, the, the first part of that is far more developed than the second two phases, and that's because that first phase is really gonna drive what happens in at least the second phase. Third phase is, phase is adoption and everybody knows how that goes. So the, the main parts of the first phase that I will mention, this inventory and analysis phase, is that we wanna look at the existing work that's been done, there's been a lot of work done in the last 10 years, some of that's starting to get old, so we wanna look at that data and see if it's relevant, and perhaps use some of that work as a model to incorporate new data and, and sort of update the conclusions. We also wanna look at industrial land and the market in general, how it's changed over the last probably 20 years or so. We had some conversations with the board and, and they thought that was an appropriate timeline. We also have some data limitations and so that may also influence how far back we can, we can look. We're gonna look at job density and just general changes in employment and trends, since that's such an important part of this, is to make sure that we have enough jobs in these places, that they're accessible to people. I wanna research some tax capacity issues, look at how that's changed in, in the city, again, probably over that same time period, give or take, and then we'll put all of this together, hopefully to, in a, in a clear way, to better characterize the, these issues of job density, job access, tax plates. So that, that's, that's a quick summary of what we anticipate doing during this first, it'll be three or so months of, of work. In terms of engagement, I anticipate for that phase, it'll be pretty targeted, we'll be talking to some, some people in the industry, and, and just try and get really more specific on the right questions, what data's available, and that kind of thing. And then, once we get into the solutions and kind of vetting what the right thing to do is, then we'll broaden engagement to, to include many more people. Then finally, what would be expected of the commission? So today, there's a, a resolution that's been drafted, so that resolution would initiate the study, and then staff would return to committee around November with a summary of what we've learned so far, you know, what I described to you, and then sort of preliminary approach to address those things, at least the things that can be addressed through the zoning code. There will likely be a lot of things that come out of this that we may not be able to address, you know, directly through the zoning code, but so we'll have to restrict it to that. And then after that, once, once we come back to committee, we will then further develop these solutions and do some more engagement and expand, expand the, the reach and the ask. So after that, spring-ish, probably late spring, we anticipate coming back to you with, you know, a, a draft of, of what we think could work, and then take that through the Planning Commission process during this city council, and, and that would be it. So that's what I've got for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can at this very early stage, but happy to, happy to answer questions or if people have suggestions, I'm happy to take those down too.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Is there any questions for Mike? Commissioner Riley?
Thank you Chair, thank you, Mr. Richardson. My question is about how this study, or if you have considered, how this study would align with or consider some of the issues addressed in sort of housing.
Chair, can you, can you hear Commissioner Riley? I don't know if the mic is too far away.
Sorry. Got it.
Thank you, sorry.
So sorry, that's my worst, one of my worst habits from this virtual environment, I appreciate it, Director Pereira. So what I was saying was, I'm, I'm wondering if you or staff have considered how this particular study might jive with both the pending inclusionary zoning study and the consultant team that may be selected to do that work, as well as the consideration of homeless services and homelessness prevention type services that's, that's going on, because it seems like a good synergy could be found by looking at those things together, so I'm curious if you'd consider that, and if not, if you could, thank you.
Through, through the Chair, Commissioner Riley, oh, looks like Louise may have some comments too, I will start and then Louise can add or, or correct. So I, my, I, we can certainly, we can certainly consider that, Commissioner Riley, I think what you may be getting at is, is one of the things that's fundamental to this study, and, and that is that there are pressures on industrial land, and, and one of the directions from which that pressure is coming is, is from residential uses, especially now when there's a demand for housing, and how do we balance that, that very real need for housing, affordable housing, against, you know, the needs of, you know, junk producing land? So I, it's, it's, it's a big broad question and, and certainly good to keep in mind, and I'll, I'll get it to Louise now to, to see what she may have to say about those other studies, because he's, he's more in touch with the details of those.
Yeah, thank you Mike, Commissioner Riley, Chair. I would agree with what Mike said about the inclusionary zoning piece, I don't know that we've real discreetly thought about that connection, but certainly there is, I mean, I don't, just think that the scope we have is, we haven't asked the consultant to get into the weeds of our various zoning districts. You know, the the thought is, you know, assess sort of focusing it more on the the market feasibility piece and sort of you know, does a does a citywide policy or more of a a policy that's focused on different districts or different geographies of the city make more sense recognizing sort of different housing markets across the city? It isn't to say we couldn't be looking at specific zoning districts, but I've been my thinking on that is that staff would be more the ones that would be focused on that, working with the consultants, sort of understanding you know, what are the implications of the consultants' work for for zoning zoning changes? If that makes sense. On the on the other one, there is, we we have thought a little bit more homeless services. Actually, later today, we hope to post the plan and posting the staff report for next Tuesday on on that for the revised recommendation based on public hearing input. And in that draft, I will reveal that we do have, among other business sort of districts, including downtown, we have a a couple of industrial districts that are included as for the use to be permitted, but very specifically excluded I two, the most intensive industrial area or industrial district for just given the the importance of that and the importance of that district for more intensive industrial and and the limited amount we have in the city tends to be further away from kind of services and other kind of things like transit to make it really be a good fit. So the industrial zoning study may relook at the sorts of uses allowed in industrial districts from the lens of, you know, ensuring if it is a use in that area, is it core or is it supportive of sort of employment? The the core employment purposes of industrial. And so there may be some suggestions for, you know, outright prohibiting or providing some more conditional sort of uses or standards when we consider those sorts of uses that are a little bit less related to that intent of employment and industrial. So it is possible that 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 this study will will reopen that a little bit. If that helps.
I appreciate it. Thank you both.
All right, so I'll turn back to Commissioner Grill. Is there anything that we need to take action on this item?
So CNPC has reviewed the scope and timeline and we provided the recommendation in the packet. So the action before the commission today would be the initiation of the industrial.
So the motion coming out of committee, oh, so is that a motion, Commissioner Grill?
Yes, that is.
So I have a motion to start the industrial zoning study. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe that was Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Yeah, so a motion by Commissioner Grill, seconded by Commissioner Presley to initiate the zoning study. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Sonia, can we get a roll call?
All right, Commissioner DeJoy? Hello?
I believe she had to step away.
Oh, okay, sorry. Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglia?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner De- Grill? Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Chair Rangel Morales?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Hey, hey.
So that motion is approved. Oh, Commissioner Yang. Sonia, could you get it?
I didn't know he was here. He'd never answered, so I have him as absent. So Commissioner Yang is here.
Yeah, I'm sure by the voice, by the phone, yeah, yes, I agree, yes, please.
Yeah, because I didn't get you on none of the votes. Okay, I'll add you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so that motion is approved. The zoning study. Moving on to Transportation Committee. I'm not sure who led it at this past time since Commissioner Rizberg was gone, so I'll turn to Mr.
Mr. Chair?
Unless with the Commissioner Underwood?
Oh, who, any one of us had offered to fill in for Commissioner Rizberg today, so whoever was going is fine.
Go ahead, Commissioner Underwood.
Sure, um, the Transportation Committee has not met recently, but we are a meeting on Monday to to see the first pass of the of the public process for the bike plan. It's it's new information that will be shared publicly around the bike plan, so looking forward to it. That's that's the full report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Underwood. The next time on the agenda is communications to nominations. So again, turn to Commissioner Underwood.
The committee has no report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Underwood. Task force and liaison reports. It looks like Commissioner DeJoy had to leave, but she's indicated there's no new information on Hillcrest. And the August meeting has been canceled. Commissioner Grill, any updates on your task force?
This is Commissioner Grill. So for the Riverview Port or Station Area Planning Task Force, our regular meeting for August tenth was canceled. However, we have rescheduled in the same time slot, a walking tour of the Riverview area at West Seventh and Randolph for committee members to familiarize themselves with the landscape as we get further into stationary planning. And so our regular meeting will return again in September. That is the only update.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. Any questions for Commissioner Grill on the Riverview Task Force? Seeing none, the next item is old business. We have none. New business, is there anything anybody would like to add to the next agenda? Seeing none, that will adjourn the August sixth, twenty twenty-one St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining and have a good weekend.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.